Do we get a countdown for this one?
No, we won't. Mayor TV thirty will join us at seven o'clock.
Okay, so tell me when it's seven or at six rather.
Mayor and council members, we are now live on YouTube and it is six o'clock.
Okay, well welcome everyone to this Monday, September thirteenth virtual regular meeting of the Livermore City Council. We're starting at six o'clock this evening because of a closed session we're about to have. And with that, I'd like to ask the clerk to do a roll call please.
Councilmember Benano?
Here.
Councilmember Carling?
Here.
Councilmember Kick?
Here.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Here.
Mayor Warner?
Here. And if I may, everyone, we're doing the meeting under the COVID rules we've been doing for a long time now. And there will be an opportunity now for the public to address us on the closed session items. And city clerk, could you explain how the public might participate please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. When participating in this portion of participating in this portion of tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person regarding only the closed session items. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature or star nine if calling in. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand now. Once a public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We have two items in the closed session, both conference with the labor negotiator. Do we have any members of the public that wish to address us?
Here, no comments have been received.
Okay, we'll close the public comment on the closed session. And we will now move into the closed session and we'll be coming back here at seven o'clock for the regular meeting.
Marie, this is where we're supposed to be, right?
Councilmember Benano should have received an invitation from Doug.
Sorry, I thought I, I thought that was the one I clicked. All right, let me get out of this one.
Okay.
Mayor and council members, it is 6:59 and TV 30 will count you in at 7 o'clock.
Marie, has Mayor Warner joined us yet?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Okay, we'll get a countdown from TV 30.
All right. Are you ready? All right, and in five, four, three, two, one, you're live.
Okay, welcome everyone to this Monday, September 13th, virtual regular meeting of the Livermore City Council. We're just returning from a closed session, so I'm going to call this meeting to order. Remind everybody that the method, we're under the COVID rules and the way to participate is given at the end of the agenda. And the city clerk will remind us as we go through there how to, that people can participate. So with this, could we have a poll call, please?
Councilmember Banano?
Here.
Councilmember Carling?
Here.
Councilmember Kig?
Here.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Here.
Mayor Warner?
Here. Okay, thank you all. Next up is the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone could join me on mute and just follow along. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, could city attorney, was there any report of action taken in the closed session?
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, this is your city attorney, Jason Alcala. No, the council did not take a reportable action in closed session, so there's nothing to disclose.
Okay, thank you. So we're now on to item 2.1, Proclamations. And I have one for the, by the city of Livermore, declaring this Pollution Prevention Week. So I'll have the proclamation, we'll be giving it to the city staff in a moment. But I'll just read the, some of the highlights. And so we're proclaiming this Pollution Prevention Week, September 19 to 25, 21. And so it's whereas the city of Livermore takes great pride in protecting and maintaining its landscapes, watersheds, and natural resources. And whereas the city of Livermore Water Resources Division supports programs to reduce pollution, increase the environmental quality of our watersheds. And whereas the third week of September is nationally recognized as Pollution Prevention Week and is an opportunity for government to join forces with business, industry, environmental groups, community organizations, and the citizens of Livermore to ensure a prosperous and sustainable future. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Livermore proclaims the week of September 19 to 25, 21, as Pollution Prevention Week and urges all community members and businesses to reduce, reuse, and recycle. Only let rain flow down the storm drains, conserve water, prevent sewer overflows by not putting fats, oils, or grease down drains, or flushing disposable wipes, and pick up litter in our community. Thank you. And I believe, if I can find in a second, gotta take me a moment. And who we have to receive this, it'll be Acting Water Resources Division Manager Anthony Smith. Will be the one accepting the proclamations. I don't know if there's anything you'd like to say at this point?
Oh, good evening, Mayor and council members. First off, I just want to say thank you. This is Anthony Smith, your Acting Water Resources Division Manager. Again, just want to say thank you for declaring next week Pollution Prevention Week. I'd also like to thank the staff of the Water Resources Division for their hard work every week to help prevent pollution, protect the environment, and safeguard public health. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for all the work you do throughout the year. So with, next up is Citizens Forum. And typically what we do is at the initial part of the council meeting is we limit the citizens forum to 30 minutes. And if there's an overflow, then we'll pick it up towards the end of the meeting. So right now I see it's 7:05. So we'll end the citizens forum at 7:35. The city clerk will give us a heads up. If the city clerk, could you explain how citizens could participate?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. When participating in this portion of tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person per item. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature or star nine if calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens for each item to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand as soon as the item is introduced. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. How many people do we have raising their hands to speak at this point?
Mayor, no comments have been received. Oh, I'm sorry, we do have a attendee wishing to comment.
Oh, great. Okay, could we have the first person up, please?
Lanning Thompson, please unmute yourself.
This is, is this the time to speak?
Well, it depends on, you can speak on anything that's not on the agenda at this point. We've also got the consent calendar with respect to the project on Pacific Avenue.
Okay, I'll speak then, sorry.
Okay, no problem. Do we have anybody else that wishes to address us in citizens forum?
No, sir, we don't.
Okay, then we've not received any public comments otherwise, right? Okay, so I'll close citizens forum at this point. And now we're on to the consent calendar. And again, we usually take care of the consent calendar in one motion. But both the, you know, the council members, any council members, as well as member of the public, can comment on any item in the consent calendar. And I, if I got it right, there's one of the items on here with respect to the housing. But at this point, let's see the, see which, if I can find which one it is, it's. That's last. Okay, that's 4.8. So Ms. Thompson, that's, 4.8 is the one that you would want to comment on. At this point, I'll ask, are there any members of the public that wish to comment on any item on the consent calendar?
Honorable Mayor, we currently have Lanning Thompson. Lanning Thompson, please unmute yourself.
I'd like to comment on item 4.8 on the consent calendar. I'm the president of Interfaith Housing and along with our developer partners, Saddleite Affordable Housing Associates. IFH is looking forward to approval of our disposition and development loan agreement so we can proceed with our project to build 140 senior apartments in two phases at the end of Pacific Avenue. I want to thank the city staff, especially Fran Reisner, for all their help with this project and the council members in advance for. for all their help with this project and the council members in advance for approving it. There is a great need for more affordable senior housing as the waitlist at Interfaith Housing 3 existing communities in Livermore have been closed indefinitely due to an overwhelming number of applicants. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on any item?
No, sir, that was the only speaker.
Okay, I will close the public comment on the consent calendar and bring it back to the council. Are there any items the council would like to pull for discussion, or do I have a motion? Councilmember Banano?
Yeah, I think we need to split off 4.1. I was absent. The minutes for the 7:21 and 7:26 meetings are combined and I was absent for the 7:26.
Okay. I think if I may ask the city attorney, you know, in some meetings that I'm in, the procedure is that even if someone is absent, they can approve the minutes. And if you could remind me in this particular session, which way do we do it here?
So your city council meeting rules of procedures do allow a counselor who's absent to approve the minutes if they have either watched the video for the meeting or otherwise looked at the replay. So that way they could act like they were present and at least see what transpired. So then they're in a position to approve the minutes. So if the counselor has done that, they can't participate this evening.
Okay, well, I think what we're going to have to do, if you could, Councilor Banano, if you could let us know how we're going to do it, but I think, why don't you move it all except for the one you want to split out?
Okay, I'll move the consent calendar absent item 4.1.
I'll second.
Okay, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Banano?
Aye.
Councilmember Carling?
Aye.
Councilmember Kig?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Aye.
Mayor Warner?
Aye. So I think we've got 4.1 has now been split out, but we have to split that into two pieces. Right, so that, so I think the, which one weren't you present for the?
I was absent on 7:26.
Okay, so let's get a motion for the 7:12 minutes.
Move approval of item 4.1, 7:21, 7:12 minutes only.
Okay, can we have a second?
Second, sure.
Okay, a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano?
Aye.
Councilmember Carling?
Aye.
Councilmember Kig?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Aye.
Mayor Warner?
Aye. And now we need a motion for the 7:26 meeting with the council member.
Item 4.1, the minutes for 7:26.
Second.
Okay, we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano?
Stand screen.
Councilmember Carling?
Aye.
Councilmember Kig?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Aye.
Mayor Warner?
Aye. All right, we're finished with item, agenda item four, and we're now on to we don't have any fives, I believe. So we're on to, I know, public hearings, so now we're under matters for consideration 6.1. And we have our Director of Emergency Services regarding COVID-19 emergency report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. This is Mark Roberts, your Director of Emergency Services and your city manager. And we'll take just a moment here to share my screen. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right, we're going to start off this evening with the numbers. And so you can see the seven-day rolling average of new daily COVID-19 cases per 100,000 population from the beginning of July through the beginning of September. And what you see here is that while through the first parts of July, county averages and city averages climb slowly as the Delta variant really took hold in the Bay Area, you see our numbers diverged pretty noticeably with the city of Livermore having more cases per day on average than the county essentially entirely through the month of August and continuing now into September. And you can see now that we are a little more than double the number of daily cases per 100,000, so that's obviously corrected for population. This graph, I think, really quite dramatically shows the impact of the Delta variant as it swept through Alameda County. You can see that through July, our numbers are relatively constant for both the city and the county, of course, starting from a very low number. You'll remember in the middle of June, both the city and county numbers were less than two or three cases per day. So those popped up for the city to about five or six all the way through essentially the end of June and through the first part of July before, before numbers of both vaccinated and unvaccinated folks started to dramatically rise. You can see in this graph that the seven-day rolling average for the vaccinated population now is more than 40 cases per day at its peak and has dropped off to about 30 cases per day. And you see that the vaccinated number remains significantly below that in the blue line there. In, on most days, a little more than three quarters of the total cases in the county were from unvaccinated members of the population. Since the last time we met in July, there have been several updates, the first of which was on August 3rd, the Alameda County Health Officer issued a masking order for essentially all activities indoors with some limited exceptions, both at all businesses and indoor workplaces. On August 23rd, the Food and Drug Administration announced full approval of the Pfizer COVID-19 vaccine for folks 16 and older, and that replaced the emergency use approval that had been in place since the first use of Pfizer. So now Pfizer is like many of the other vaccinations that we use that have permanent approval. Additional studies are ongoing for the other popular Kaiser vaccines, excuse me, COVID vaccines, and that we expect those approvals here this fall. Assembly Bill 361 is the open meetings during a declared state of emergency has now passed both the Assembly and the Senate of the State of California with two-thirds majorities of both. And this will allow a continuation of our current format of meetings while essentially masking and social distancing is required in indoor settings as well as a state of emergency is declared. And so that bill is awaiting the governor's signature. We do expect him to sign that before the end of the month. And so at this point, your staff is continuing to plan the meetings to take place in the format that we have been doing for the past 15 months until such time where we can be indoors without social distancing and without masks. In addition, the last item, which is not listed on there, is the federal government's recent declaration that large employers, those with more than 100 employees be required to have their employees be vaccinated. You'll remember that the federal government has already issued orders pertaining directly to their own employees. This is a separate order that would apply to private businesses as well. In addition to that, the federal government is issuing orders for those who are contractors to the federal government. And it, but at this point, that does not extend to those entities which take grant funds from the federal government. In addition to the activities at the federal level, we also expect activity at the state level, since those federal orders will ultimately come from OSHA. And because we have a California OSHA, the state of California has the ability either to essentially simply adopt the federal rules or to issue rules that are at least as strong as the federal rules. And so we'll wait to see what happens both on the federal level and the state level, but we do expect a significant movement on the vaccination front from both the federal and state government. We'll keep you apprised and we'll give you an update at our next meeting. Since we last met, we've hosted several pop-up vaccination clinics coordinated through city staff with the county and with community partners, including two at St. Michael Parish on 7/31 and August 21st as well, and in May Nissan Park on August 15th and September 5th. And so these, each of these clinics was successful, having noticeably more than the typical number of members at a pop-up inoculation clinic countywide. So we've done a great job with our outreach. And in fact, the community partners have helped us to go door-to-door in some cases to make sure that the community was aware of the fact that we were having the pop-up clinics. In addition to the pop-up clinics, of course, we have availability throughout the community through pharmacy offices, doctors' offices, and clinics. So at this point, we will continue to have these pop-up events. We'll continue to publicize these through our website, through direct door-to-door in some case information as well as outreach into the impacted groups. But if folks want to get a shot, most pharmacies now are taking walk-ins virtually every day of the week. And so it is pretty straightforward to get a shot at this point. In addition to those, there has been a change in the recommendation since the CDC issued its initial information noting that immunocompromised residents can now schedule a third dose. And that includes folks that have compromised immune systems for a variety of reasons, including cancer treatment, organ transplant, natural conditions, and other items. And you do not need to have a doctor's note for those. You can self-certify that. If you have one of those qualifying conditions, you do need to go through a questionnaire and you can receive your third dose. As we noted before, in August, city of Livermore numbers took a dramatic and upward shift from the number of daily cases. And in response to that, in August, Mayor Warner formed a local task force to address COVID-19. I've assigned Assistant City Manager Christine Martin to be the staff for Livermore, to staff that task force. And I'll now have her give a brief overview of the task force and its activities over the last month. Christine?
Thank you, City Manager Mark Roberts. I am Assistant City Manager Christine Martin, and I'm here to give you your update on the COVID-19 task force, which as Mark Roberts stated, was established by Mayor Warner. It all began back in July when Mayor Warner sent a letter on behalf of the city council to the county expressing concerns around Livermore's low vaccination rates and requesting more granular data than was available at the time so that the city could focus our outreach efforts on areas in need. In response to that letter, we did receive a response back from the county on August 12th. And the county did provide additional data and a commitment to continue collaborating with the city in our efforts. And shortly thereafter, Mayor Warner established the COVID-19 task force in collaboration with Supervisor David Halbert. And it's comprised of leaders from community organizations and businesses, as you can see on the slide, to develop recommendations for increasing vaccination rates in Livermore. And the, so far, the task force has met three times. And from those meetings, there have been productive conversations and plans for future efforts. Out of these meetings, currently, the supervisor's office is leading the charge on the development of PSA videos, public service announcement videos depicting local leaders, trusted healthcare providers, and others in the community expressing the importance of getting vaccinated. And these will be publicized and pushed out through various media as soon as they are ready, anticipated within the week. Additionally, pop-up clinics are in the planning stages with the county to be located at the Springtown Library to reach areas of the community north of 580 as well as at our Sunday farmers markets in cooperation with Livermore Downtown Inc. and our farmers market vendor who are very excited to have the vaccination clinics come to, come to the farmers market. And as well as returning to Main Nissan Park where we've had some success with our vaccination clinic. This location, we hope to turn into as a co-located vaccination and testing site for the community. And we anticipate that that will be available on a weekly basis to the community, beginning within the next couple of weeks. Just as a reminder, we also have ongoing standing vaccination clinics at Stanford Healthcare Valley Care on Stanley Boulevard and through Access Community Health at our Civic Center Library. Days and times of operations are available on our website for those two facilities as well as a link to many other private sites offering vaccinations. As mentioned by Mr. Roberts earlier in his presentation, many pharmacies, doctors' offices, drugstores have openings and walk-in appointments available. So the link to those sites, if you're interested, is on our website as well. And lastly, the next steps for the task force, oh, sorry, excuse, wrong slide. So you may be wondering how are Livermore's vaccination numbers doing? And this data on the slide is provided by the county and the Public Health Department for the state as well as CDC vaccination data. Livermore does continue to lag behind the other incorporated cities in the county as far as vaccinations, but we are continuing to make progress on this front. As you can see, over the past six weeks, Livermore's unvaccinated number has dropped by approximately 5,900 due to the continued efforts by the city and county to bring vaccinations to Livermore as well as likely the recent FDA approval of the Pfizer vaccination. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mark.
In addition to the activities that we've done for vaccination, we will be working with businesses throughout the community that have expanded into public areas, especially into parking areas and the landscaping areas. And so as a part of that process, we put out a survey especially focusing on downtown businesses utilizing the flex zone for public parking or outdoor dining. And so one of our first questions was to determine, you know, how are we doing on getting some feedback that's balanced for the various types of businesses there? And you can sort of see that the bulk of the respondents were restaurateurs, retailers, or involved in personal service. And you can see there's a range of other activities there. So one of the questions we had is how's it going? And you'll see that about the same is the largest category there, the orange, 35% with a percentage of folks 16 and 10.8 doing either much better or somewhat better. And some folks having a worse-than-normal summer overall. Big round numbers about 21 or 22%, excuse me, about 38% having a worse or much worse. So you can see it, it hasn't evenly hit the various businesses in downtown compared to a normal year. So you can see the question there where we noted that we had worked with businesses to convert flex zone spaces, areas back to parking. And so of course, we currently still have many more spaces that are set aside for outdoor dining than we would during a normal year. So one of the things that we have heard from retailers in particular was a concern about parking. So we did ask a question on the survey about parking. So you can see it was divided into whether much more parking is needing, some more parking is needed. There's an appropriate balance between outdoor dining and parking or some flex zone dining, more flex zone dining is needed. And you can see the vast bulk of respondents there were concerned that either some or much more parking was needed. At the same time, however, we have uh been talking to our downtown restaurateurs, and there is a significant concern that not all of their um diners are ready to return toward uh an indoor environment. Um, so normally what we do would do in the October timeframe is we would remove all of the outdoor dining areas that are in landscape areas or parking areas and return all of the parking areas back to park. Um, of course, there's nothing normal about this year, um, so we will be continuing to meet with downtown uh merchants, restaurateurs and businesses. In fact, the next meeting is set up for this Wednesday where we will be working through the dialogue. Um, clearly, uh, we're coming up on the the several months which uh for retailers is the make-or-break part of the year. Um, the vast majority of dollars that a retailer makes is made during the first fourth quarter, a time roughly from Halloween um through the end of the year. Um, and uh at the same time, uh, we have to balance that with the fact that not every diner is willing to return indoors, um, and the unpredictability of what's coming next, although we seem to have hit the peak of the Delta surge. Um, as you've heard in the news, uh, there's other variants that are out there, and uh the one thing that we found uh going forward is that um past performance, you know, is ultimately, we don't have a great predictor of what's gonna happen um next. So we will be meeting with downtown businesses uh starting this Wednesday. We expect to work through um the details of uh things that the one thing that we are going to avoid this year is the large-scale tents in the public right-of-way. Um, that caused a significant amount of challenges across the board, um, from compliance with fire codes to the inability to heat those spaces. So during the winter, they became incredibly cold and unpleasant, and they blocked a lot of the signage for the related uh businesses that weren't necessarily the restaurants. However, the good news is without the tents, um, with umbrellas, uh, we are able to then have heat lamps, um, which on a clear crisp day actually can provide a lot of comfort um outdoors in flex zone areas. So we think that there's some some uh some uh offsetting benefits there. Um, and we do want to work through exactly um sort of how much and when we adjust uh the flex zones there. Obviously, we do want to provide some relief for our retailers out there, but we know that our restaurateurs are um still benefiting from that expanded area there. So um, at this point, my update to you is to tell you that um we'll be working with our downtown businesses um to come up with uh further solutions on this, and I'll report back to that at your next meeting. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Okay, I think uh at this point, um, I'll I'll find out if there's any member of the public that wishes to uh comment at this point, and then I'll bring it back to the council for questions and comments. Do we have any members of the public that wish to comment on this item?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, I'll close the public comment on this item and bring it back to the council. Uh, let's see, let's keep um track of who's in what order here. I think uh Councilmember Bonano is first.
Yeah, thank you for that report, uh, Mark. A couple of quick questions. Backs to the vaccine, um, slides, the um, the federal mandate of greater than a hundred employees need to be vaccinated, who's enforcing that or who does, who gets to enforce that? And can you say a little more about that?
Well, at this point, um, we don't have the detailed regulations, um, uh, and so I don't have a firm answer. So unfortunately, uh, that one's a very frustrating one because we have a press release and we have part of the information in an executive order, but ultimately OSHA is going to uh issue the detailed guidelines um on there. And so one of the questions is what portions of that, if any, would OSHA enforce? What portions would uh local uh health organizations enforce? And so I don't have an answer for that. I expect, or I let me put it this way, I hope um to have much more information um by our next meeting.
Okay. Um, I think you're assuming, though, it's not going to be city staff that has to try to enforce that kind of thing, but uh as you say, we'll know more once we get clarification.
Correct.
Um, two more quick questions. What fraction of businesses roughly or what was the turnout on the survey? And what sample size are we looking at roughly?
And normally I have that data right here, and I'm gonna actually pick on our uh Office of Innovation and Economic Development Director, Adam uh Van de Water. And Adam, can you give me an answer on that one? How many folks responded to our survey?
We received thirty-eight responses to the survey.
And what's the total number, just just for the, just for completeness, what's the number of businesses that probably got the survey versus how many businesses we have downtown? I mean, that sounds like a fairly small fraction. Not to say it's not statistically significant, I'm just curious about the fraction of our businesses that actually registered there.
It certainly doesn't represent all of the businesses within the jury geography surveyed, and in fact, we have noticed that the representation uh does not also exactly match the uh distribution of business types downtown. So um, we appreciated the feedback, but we find it is also important to meet with them individually. So as your city manager mentioned, we will be hosting a meeting uh this coming Wednesday to receive specific uh feedback and have a give-and-take with the businesses to plan uh for the coming winter season.
Good, I I will be attending that and um we'll have more to say after that meeting. Last question is what, I think I know the answer to this, but I am gonna just ask it anyway. What what is the turnaround of our flex zones? I mean, what what was the quickest we could? I understand it's work, I understand it's doing work, undoing work, doing work, undoing work, but what is the, just to know sort of how to go forward with what we do with flex zones? Is this something that over the course of a weekend could be changed and changed back? Have we, um, maybe there's a way to balance people's needs on a little quicker turnaround rather than just saying, you know, from October to May, it's gonna be one way? And um, do we have any flexibility in turning, turning it more quickly?
So you do have some flexibility. Um, and this is done uh with uh existing city staff. So your opportunity cost is all of the things that they would normally be doing. It takes um a significant part of your professional landscape crew a full day um to basically go one direction or the other. If you're talking about the entire downtown area, you're talking about two days worth of work or about between twelve and sixteen hours worth of work for a four-person crew on that, and that's a significant portion of your sort of total citywide capacity. You'll remember, we actually did this a couple of times when we uh closed the streets uh for the weekends and then reopened them um afterwards. And so um that is possible. It takes a significant amount of city resources um to do that, and so I probably wouldn't recommend that we do that on a weekly basis. But for example, i- if there was a period of time um that uh was somewhat periodic, but longer than that, um, we could certainly do that. One of the things we found was that it didn't always work out the way we thought it was going to uh when we sort of made those quick changes. It it takes people a bit to get used to what's sort of going on. This may be a slightly different uh, a slightly different characteristic, but um it does take a noticeable but possible amount of resources to change it.
And just to confirm also, um, businesses that use those flex zone spots for their for their dining, I mean, the the city isn't charging anything for that utilization of that space, is that correct?
That, that's correct.
Okay. Those are all the questions I had, thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Carling.
Yes, uh, thanks very much for the report, as always. Uh, I was interested in the task force and maybe Ms. Martin can help me with the pop-up vaccination clinics? Is the plan, for example, to have a vaccination clinic at uh Farmer's Market every Sunday?
Uh, the county is still working out the details of that with uh lining up a provider to actually provide the vaccine, um, and once they have that, we'll know how frequent they plan on doing it. They do plan on doing it um more than uh, more than once. I mean, they'll have the the one clinic and then a second dose clinic for sure, uh, and and beyond that, I think it depends on the provider that they locate.
Is that true about Springtown Library and Mainison Park and so on?
Mainison is, uh, the county is hoping to set that up on a recurring weekly basis um for the foreseeable future. Springtown, I believe they are planning on a um, on a one uh, one first and second dose clinic, and then depending on the uh response rate and the turnout that they get, uh, they may return for another one.
Well, somehow I, um, let's see, with regard to the task force, somehow I think looking at next steps, what the messaging strategies might be, I mean, one thing, I think the data clearly shows that getting vaccinated helps. And so I just, I would think the task force would somehow also want to focus on that specific message and um encourage people to get vaccinated because again, it's, it's really disappointing that we here in Livermore are the lowest in terms of the county, in terms of vaccination, and still um suffering with people getting uh, getting COVID. So whatever we can do to providing additional messaging about the importance of vaccination and mask wearing and so on, I think would be important. The other question I have of Mark is um, in all previous reports on this topic, you have summarized, uh, you know, the rent relief and uh the E-card or whatever we call it, I forgot what we call it, and so on and so forth. And I was just wondering, you don't have to go into gory details now, but I guess, is that program now, have we decided that's been concluded? And if so, is it possible for us to get, you know, maybe a memo summarizing um how, how it went?
Yes, we can certainly provide a memo to you, and and the reason it was not part of uh today's was that uh by July, uh, virtually all of the programs um had wrapped up. And so what we can do is um, we will uh present a final uh tallying of uh the um actual program, which was very successful and successful, um, the, because of course, we do have some outstanding things. Um, you know, our e-gift program wraps up in just a couple of days, so um we can certainly before the end of the month have that final uh accounting out uh on this. One of the major points uh that our help really helped was before the state and federal help kicked in. So it was not only the dollars which were important, it was the timing. Um, and of course, now most business, virtually all, are able to be open, um, pretty close to their normal operations. And of course, we were helping people through that time when they were not, but we can give you a final accounting of all of the various programs that were related to both the businesses and those that helped individuals.
Well, thanks, I would certainly appreciate looking at um sort of the final tally on that and the kind of impact that we had with the community. So, thank you.
Councilmember, this is Adam Van Water, your Director of Innovation Economic Development. We do have a report up on the OIED website that summarizes the uh the various programs that the council authorized uh back in August of last year, and accounts for the full two million dollars that were expended through the original grant program, the match of the county funds, the Gift Livermore Program, and the various rental assistance programs. Uh, but as your city manager mentioned, Gift Livermore is coming to an end this Saturday, um, and all funds have been expended with the exception of a few dollars here that we're going to program into a Livermore Valley made campaign that officially launches on October second.
Thank you again.
Okay, Vice Mayor Monroe.
Okay, uh, first of all, I I think that the uh Livermore Valley made campaign sounds absolutely wonderful, um, but that's another topic. Um, I have actually three questions to uh for for uh city staff. Um, first of all, um, I, going back to that graph where it said some people have done much better, some people have done much worse, the nice pie chart, um, I'm wondering, that was not broken down by type of business that or uh, I'm wondering, do we have that information? Um, who thrived, who didn't? Um, and is it the type of business? Well, you probably don't want to speak to the o- other factors, but.
So the question of cross-tabbing between type of business and whether they had a better year or not, and I'm gonna.
Precisely, yeah.
I'm gonna have our Director of uh Office of Innovation Economic Development, Mr. Van de Water, respond to that question.
So uh, uh, again, with only thirty-eight um respondents, we don't have a deep data set there, but we can see who responded, what type of business they identified, self-identified as, and how they characterized their year. As you saw in the data, the majority are about the same, with some better, some worse, some significantly worse, um, and very few significantly better. Uh, but we can tease through that data uh and get back to you, Vice Mayor, with a little bit more detailed accounting of that thirty-eight, um, and try to tease that out as as part of our conversation this coming Wednesday as well.
Okay, um, so over the past month or so, uh, I think all of, all of the council have gotten um emails um with, you know, requesting action, and uh many people have requested specific action, um, vaccine, uh, passports or something similar. Um, and um, this is sort of the, w- we've talked a lot about the task force working on positive messaging. Um, this would be the opposite kind of uh a- a- action. Um, but that doesn't necessarily come from the city, and I'm wondering if you could speak a little bit to the uh kinds of, uh, to, you know, to the um areas of the of authority that uh would come from federal, you know, with it with the new mandates, for example, state and local. And.
So um, as I touched on, um, you are correct, the the landscape is changing very, very quickly. Um, as we uh, a- as we discussed this evening, starting with um the federal government um dealing with large employers, um, those with more than a hundred, of course. You know, one of the reasons that uh we're interested in that particular federal order is because sort of our largest employers in the city of Livermore, our two national laboratories would be directly impacted um by that, most likely because they are uh, you know, related to and contractors with the federal government. But the, but one of the things that uh will likely happen as well, as I noted, is that um although OSHA exists at the federal level, um, we are one of the states that has a a state-level OSHA uh or Office of Safety. Um, and so uh that is gonna have another level of uh impact on this, and so we do actually expect that this federal action will trigger um action at the state level as well. Um, the city of Livermore does not have its own health officer. Um, and so one of the things, unlike the city of Berkeley or the city of San Francisco, that's both a city and a county, um, Livermore has to relate and rely on the county health officer um to make determinations. Um, the county health officer has generally noted um that they believe that their uh orders should go be county-wide. You'll remember at one point during the pandemic, Tri Valley asked to have different rules applied to us than the rest of the county, and the county health officer was pretty direct with us, noting that inside a county of our size, movement is so dramatic that making local rules at the city level was not a very effective way um to deal with the pandemic. Um, and so that limits our ability as uh the city to impact private uh businesses. But I think the main uh theme for right now, over the next couple of weeks, is that the, that the um landscape is changing so dramatically at the federal and state level. I think we want to get a very good understanding of what's going on at that level, because I really don't uh want to be in the case of us tripping over a state or federal regulation or essentially being out of sync with those regulations, um, should they come down. And since we now have indication that those are imminent, um, we'd like to give our attorneys a chance to wade through the real regulations when they come out rather than just the press releases or news reports about it, um, and then we can get back to you at your next meeting with an update.
Great, okay, and then I have one more question, which is, do we have an idea? The, so the way I wrote this question, I I'm in my notes was, do we have a sense for why Livermore is so special? But another way to write that is, why are we, uh, why are our numbers twice what the uh, or the rest of the counties? Do we know what the, what is the problem? A matter of getting to the vaccine? Is the problem resisting? Um, do we, do we have a sense for that at all?
So uh, I think you quoted two different numbers, and one is sort of our uh case rate, um, which is higher and and about double the county.
Sorry, that's yes.
And and I do want to approach that. We believe exactly the same factors um that influenced uh the entire um disease pattern that we had here, where uh Livermore numbers um were higher than our neighboring communities. Um, and that has to do with our uh, the, the uh socioeconomics of our community. Um, it has to do with some of uh the units in our community being uh crowded, it has to do with the type of businesses we have within the community. Um, all of those are factors. Um, they're not necessarily cause and effect, but they all contribute to that. Um, one of the questions is sort of why do our vaccination rates not look like the rest of the county? I think part of the reason is we're performing much more like the state of California as a whole. Um, and so if you look at our numbers as far as vaccinations, w- we're a little ahead on fully vaccinated, a little bit behind. On first vaccinations, but as compared to the state, we look a lot like the state. And I think that comes down to, to geography, culture. Um, the, the makeup of our community being somewhat like the state. Um, so we look a little different. So, so the thing we're different from is the county. And the county is quite unique. They are one of the highest vaccinated counties, uh, in the entire state. So, um, this still is an issue we very much want to work on, but, uh, but I think the differences are that, that. Um, our local makeup is just a little bit different than the rest of the county and a little bit more like the rest of the state of California.
Right, right. Those are my questions. Thank you very much.
Um, I'll just ju- jump in here and say that that's the reason we have the, uh. Task force and one of the key questions of the task force is can we get the data so that we can answer the, uh, questions? More, uh, with informed than just saying we have differences and they, that must be the, the case. But I. What we're trying to do is find out. Which subsets of our population are really driving the under vaccination and the higher case rate? And then we can tailor messages for those groups, but we're. On a good track with the county giving us information. And I would, uh, you know. That we use that to inform the decision-making. At the moment, we have general public service announcements and we think we know what maybe a couple of the groups are. But without any guidance, everybody's just kind of guessing. Uh, Councilmember Kick.
Um, so, um, I don't expect you to have that answer to this, and this is a question that just came up today. Um, dealing with trying to get my son a PCR test, um, was actually quite difficult. We had to go all the way to Antioch. Um, if we didn't want to wait a few days. And I don't know if that data is tracked countywide, um, wait times for testing, supply of testing. Um, if it is, is that something that we might be able to see in these reports? I just am wondering if. Um, that has. If that's having any effect on the community and then because of the order from, um. Biden about ramping up access to testing, if we'll be able to hopefully see a difference in that soon.
And we will, uh, uh, contact the county about that and see if we can get some information.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the council? I, I've got a, uh, a couple of things. One is thank you for the, uh, report. It's been a while since we've had it. A lot has changed. Uh, and things are. Moving rapidly and I think it's always important for us to kind of reset. How we're thinking about it, but what we were thinking of just a couple of months ago is no longer pertains. And we've got a rapid change through here. And I think there's a pretty clear. Sense of urgency amongst ourselves, the county. Uh, that we've got to do everything we can to help Livermore get more vaccinations out there. And then we also have to understand what's driving our case rates. And, and the behavior. So we're, we're doing that. So thank you. You mentioned that the third dose was now available for the immunocompromised. Is that both Pfizer and Moderna or just Pfizer?
Um, it is, it is both at this point.
Okay, but for the, uh, others who got the, um. You know, qualified early to get the vaccine. Uh, it's looks like the best I saw is that Pfizer will be authorized for people, say, in the, the older age groups, et cetera. Uh, and it'll be a while before Moderna would get out there for the non, uh. Immunocompromised, but the different demographics that were used to, um. You know, prioritize the vaccine rollout in the first place, that right? It's, it's different.
It, it is different. And for, a- and again, um, the guidance is not actually finally locked in for non-immunocompromised. Um, at one point it appeared that at the eight month mark. Um, they might be looking at a third dose for certain of those, uh, populations or certain, uh, portions of the population. Um, but at this point that has not been finalized, so we, uh, do expect that. Uh, over the next, uh, few weeks, there'll be further guidance along that.
Right. So I, that's another case that's, uh, that's in flux at the moment.
Yes.
Okay, so all right. And there, uh, certainly a lot of debate about how to apply the, uh, the third doses and where and everything else. So there's. I, I can see over the next few weeks it's, uh, unfolding. The, the other thing I would let, want to let people know is that at, not only to. Um, initiate this task force, but I've also asked the Alameda County Conference of Mayors to put it on their next meeting agenda. To share best practices and to understand. You know, what's their perspective, what they're, what they're doing. And to the extent that it makes sense. Want the mayor's conference to, uh, align on asking the health department for help. Rather than individually, uh, in different cities trying to, uh, get something done, which I don't think is possible. So I just want to let people know where, where that's on, on the path too. And then, uh, finally, with respect to the downtown businesses. Uh, it, from the data that you've got there, the surveys and everything else, it's pretty clear that there are differing points of view as to what can be done. And certainly, I mean, I'm, myself and others have heard aloud and clear from the restaurants, how vital it is for them to have the outdoor, uh, parking. We know that, um, we put it out there and it helped a lot and we've experimented with it. And I just want to, uh, say that that's still a perspective there. We've also heard. Uh, from the retail, how valuable it is for them to make their numbers at the end of the year. So I just want to second, uh, Councilmember Banano's suggestion is that if, uh, flexibility can help here. That, um. We need to, uh, consider it. And, and even if it's on a rapid turnaround, but the other one is. Maybe, uh, at the, uh, at the end of the year, everybody's made their numbers through the various sales that. You know, we would earlier switch back over to more, um. Dining availability or something like that. But anyway, I would just. Suggest, uh, we think it through and I'm pretty sure that the meeting on Wednesday will be, uh, attended and there'll be some very interesting points of view. So is there anything, uh, oh, I, I see, uh, Councilmember Kick, you have your hand up. Would you like to say some more?
Sorry, lowered.
Okay, good. So I think, uh, again, thank you so much for doing this. Thanks, uh. To Christine and the other staff for, uh, work on the task force and, um. We'll get, we'll figure this out. So we're now on to item six dot two. And that's the, um. Approval of the General Plan Advisory Committee Member Selection Process Schedule. Do we have the staff report, please?
Yes, we're going to have, uh, Senior Planner Andy Ross lead us through this item.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Can everyone see my screen all right?
Yes.
Great. So as just mentioned, we'll review the proposed general plan and advisory committee selection process, but just briefly, uh, by way of background. Um, earlier this year, uh, the council identified the general plan update as a priority. And on June twenty eighth, council authorized the formation of this committee comprised of fifteen regular members and four alternates. Uh, and also directed staff prepare, uh, necessary materials for the recruitment and selection process, uh, with assistance from committee sub, council subcommittees. And then again, on July twenty sixth, the council adopted the committee's rules procedure. Approved those application materials and directed staff to commence with recruitment, which we've done. In addition, the council formed a subcommittee comprised of Mayor Warner and Vice Mayor Monroe to refine the selection process and create a schedule. So the proposed selection process is broken into three components and we'll go through each of them individually. Uh, the first is a candidate selection process where, uh, council will identify the candidates. Uh, they wish to issue, uh, interview out of the pool of applicants. Next, we'll go through the interview. Process and then appointment process, and then finally talk about the schedule. So staff received forty eight applications for the committee over a nearly five week recruitment period. Uh, and these applications will be reviewed by council as part of your independent review. And at a future special workshop, each council would, uh, select their top six candidates to interview one at a time. Uh, in a rotating sequence until thirty individuals have been selected to interview. Uh, so what we mean by a rotating sequence is, um. Hypothetically, if the mayor would select the first candidate followed by the vice mayor and so on and so on, at the next round. The, the vice mayor would get, would start followed by the third council member and fourth. Uh, and we would repeat that process that would ensure, uh, each council member would be first and last at least once throughout that process. And this format would allow each council member to select their preferred applicant and adjust if a potential candidate was already selected by another council member. In addition, at the same workshop, uh, council would, will review and finalize five interview questions and each, uh, council member. Uh, has independently provided interview questions to staff for our review, which we're currently doing. Uh, and searching for common themes and we'll have that list prepared, uh, at the council's, uh, special workshop, which right now is anticipated for September twentieth. Uh, during a series of. Special workshops, the full council would interview each of the candidates. So each candidate would have fifteen minutes to answer five questions, followed by a short, uh, transition period. Uh, and this is fifteen minutes in total for all five questions, not three minutes per question. Uh, the first two workshops, uh, will host eleven interviews. Uh, the third workshop council will conduct eight interviews. At the end of that final workshop, council will be able to discuss and deliberate and make. Uh, your committee selections. So the selections would occur through a series of rounds. Each council member. Uh, would vote for, uh, uh, five candidates. And if a candidate received three or more council votes, then that candidate would be appointed to the committee. And this process will continue and repeat until fifteen regular committee members have been selected. And following the regular selection, uh, council would follow that same process to like select four alternates. Then, uh, subsequently the clerk would swear in the committee members and alternates. And from that for, for the advisory committee would meet in accordance with its rules procedure throughout the general plan update process. So the first, uh, special workshop that would be, would take place on Monday, September twentieth. And at this workshop, council would select, uh, thirty, thirty interview candidates and approve, uh, and finalize the interview questions. Um, and then next would be the, um, special workshops. Uh, to interview these candidates, uh, since publication of your staff report, there, uh, small, uh, scheduling conflict arose. So. The, uh, proposed schedule is September twenty eighth, September thirtieth and October seventh. Uh, to conduct interviews and select fifteen committee members and four alternates. At the end of the third workshop. And so staff is recommending the council approve the selection process. And the amended schedules just discussed and then direct staff to make the necessary arrangements. And that concludes staff's presentation. Uh, we're available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on this item.
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, I'll close the public comment on six dot two and bring it back to the, uh. Council and I would like to suggest. That, um, there you saw the overall, uh, process. And if possible, if we could take each of those piece parts that we saw on the slides and just go through it in that order. Is that? Is council amenable to doing that? Okay, so could we, could you go back to, um? Let's see, which one is this? Your, uh, your.
Slide three, I think.
Yeah, you know, I was just checking that with this one. So I, um, would anyone? Like to comment on this? I'll just toss one thing out first. I'd like the order that we, uh, go through this to be randomly selected, not just start with. Our title or something. That's the only modification I would make to the suggestion here. Any other comments? All right, can I get a, just a raise, a quick raise of hand? Are we good on this slide? Okay. Great. Okay, we go to the next slide. Uh, any, uh, comments on this one?
I just have a question. Um, it's eleven, eleven, eleven interviews, eleven interviews and then eight interviews. And the same day that we have eight interviews, we also. Choose everybody. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Are we good on this slide?
I, I have just a quick question. On the fourth bullet, top five are provided to clerk, three votes equal selected. What if, what if nobody gets three votes? I just don't quite understand that step.
Sure, the thought being that the, uh, each council member would list out their five top. Send it to the clerk when we put it in a matrix and see, uh, which candidates got the most votes. Um, and then if hypothetically, um, no one gets enough, then we would go back around.
Okay, so it's, it, okay, I'm, I'm sort of misunderstood. So, so the clerk would get a total of twenty five. Yeah, looking for matches of three or more. She'd be looking for matches of three or more. Okay.
Uh, I, I think that if we had a, uh, out the gate. We ended up in that spot, I think then there's might be a need for some conversation. Uh, but it, it's potentially could happen towards the end. Uh, but I don't, we don't know, but I, I think we'll, um. Rather be too prescriptive here. I think we're going to have to kind of cross that bridge when we get to it. And if we get to some kind of impasse, uh. We'll have to figure it out.
That's all I had. I'm fine with it.
Okay, and, uh, okay, so then we're good on this slide. Uh, let's go to the last one. Uh, any, uh, everybody good with these dates? Okay. Uh, so then I'm looking for a motion to approve this process.
I'll move.
And I'll second. So, uh, go, we have a roll call vote, please.
It's Member Banano.
All right.
Councilmember Carley.
Hi.
Councilmember Kick. Vice Mayor Monroe.
Hi.
Mayor Warner.
Hi. Okay, miss, uh, the item passes unanimously. And we're on now to, uh, six dot three. Uh, it's a pretty exciting opportunity to, uh, establish a, uh, wine heritage district. Do we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Honorable Mayor Mark Roberts, the city manager, and I'd like to introduce our Office of Innovation Economic Development Director. I'm Adam Vanderwater, who will lead us through the staff report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members. This is Adam Vanderwater, your Director of Innovation and Economic Development. Tonight, I'm pleased to bring you the first step toward forming a benefit assessment district for Livermore Valley's historic wine country. And I am joined tonight by the project sponsors, Brandy Addington, Executive Director of the Livermore Valley Wine Growers Association. Chair of the Wine Growers Association Board, Stephen Kent-Mirasue. And Kelly Rankin, Project Manager for Civitas, the district formation consultant contracted by the wine growers. So let me see if I can share. My. Mean for you here and, uh, give you a summary of the details of this, uh, exciting opportunity. Can everybody see that screen? So the formation of the wine heritage district is governed by the Property and Business Improvement District Law of nineteen ninety four, which requires a majority of all affected wineries to sign a petition. To initiate formation proceedings for the purposes described in the management district plan. Petitions were signed by affected wineries through the summer and, uh, spring of two thousand twenty one and are included in this evening's packet along with the full management district plan. On July second, the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration certified that petitioners represent the majority. Of the fifty six affected wineries by both number and by gross direct consumer winery sales as required by law. Uh, the management district plan details the geography, purpose, timeline, budget. Ration and management of the wine heritage district, which, uh, can be summarized as follows. So the formation is sponsored by the Wine Growers Association. It includes fifty six wineries located within the boundaries of Alameda and Contra Costa Counties. And the cities of Danville, Livermore and Dublin on shown, as shown on this map. The district is designed to provide specific. The district is designed to provide specific benefits to payors by increasing winery sales in the Livermore Valley, marketing and brand awareness, community and industry advocacy, quality enhancement and education, and sales promotion. The assess, the annual assessment rate is two percent of gross direct-to-consumer winery sales made in the state of California, which will generate an estimated six hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars in the first year depending on total winery sales. The district will form for a five-year term beginning July one, two thousand and twenty-one. And I'll here pause to note that there is a correction memo in your packet to ensure that this date, July one, two thousand twenty-one, is reflected consistently across all attachments for this item in your packet. And I'll invite wine growers to speak to their desire to not begin the collection of assessments until January one of two thousand twenty-two, but the formation will begin as of July one. The wine growers will serve as the Owners Association to provide all services for the Wine Heritage District. And the city of Livermore has agreed to serve as lead agency to administer the funds. The city will, will retain two percent of all assessments to administer the district and will contract with HTL companies who currently administer this city's business license registrations to bill and collect all assessments and to remit proceeds to the Owners Association, again, the wine growers. For you this evening are two resolutions for your consideration, and staff recommends approval. The first is a resolution of intent to form fixing the October eleventh date of a public meeting to receive comment on the Wine Heritage District Formation and the November eighth, two thousand twenty-one, date of a final public hearing prior to council adoption of a resolution to form the district. The second is a resolution requesting consent from Alameda and Contra Costa Counties and the cities of Dublin and Livermore and the town of Danville to form the district. That recommends council adopt these two resolutions, which would issue the notice included in your packet and allow the affected jurisdictions to adopt tentatively scheduled consenting resolutions prior to the public meeting in October and final public hearing on November eighth. So with that overview, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. And I invite my colleagues from the wine growers and Civitas into the conversation to answer any questions.
So were they, any of the wine growers people going to speak as part of this? Or are they going to be coming in through public comment?
They are available for your questions and are here to provide any context. Brandy Addington, the Director of the Wine Growers Association, and Stephen Mirasue, the Board Chair of the Wine Growers Association. If you would like to say a few words about the formation of the Wine Heritage.
Do you want to go first, Brandy?
You can go right ahead, and I will follow up after you. Thank you, Stephen.
Good evening, Mayor, Honorable Mayor, and City Council and City Staff. I'm Stephen Mirasue, the President of the Board of the Livermore Valley Wine Growers Association and a member of the Steering Committee for the Wine Heritage District. The, the Livermore Valley Wine Heritage District is the culmination of a multi-year strategic planning process that the board underwent to look at and then form a business improvement district. The Heritage District is a funding mechanism, existential at this point in its importance, that will allow the assessed members of our district to sustainably fund marketing, sales, and promotion activities that will showcase the world-class quality of Livermore Valley wineries and grape growers. With the increased budget that the WHD will generate, our winery and vineyard owners will have a greater ability to increase visibility, draw traffic to the valley, increase sales, and positively impact the long-term financial health of our winery and hospitality community in Livermore. This community is what, in my opinion, obviously, a biased opinion, but makes our wine country such a vibrant place. I wholeheartedly endorse the formation of the Heritage District and encourage Livermore City Council to support this crucial initiative. And I'm here to answer any specific questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. And Brandy, if you go next, and then what I'll do is go to see if there are any public comment. And then I'll bring it back to the council. And then if you, both of you could be available, then you could be available to answer questions from us.
Certainly.
Thank you so much. We, we are very excited for the possibility and hopeful approval of this Wine Heritage District in Livermore Valley wine country. We are, you know, we've been formed for nearly thirty years and have been moving strong and growing each year in the amount of wineries that are here and vineyards that we hope to continue to increase throughout the region. With the fifty-one percent approval rate confirmed by the county, we feel confident that we have unanimity moving forward as we continue to market this valley, the city of Livermore, and the tri-valley as a whole as a world-class wine-growing region.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I'll open up a public comment on this item. Do we have any members of the public that wish to speak on this?
There are no comments have been received.
Okay, I'll close the public comment on this item, bring it back to the council for questions and deliberations. So Councilmember Carling.
Yeah, thanks. I'm just curious, you said two percent of sales in California, if I heard correctly. And so roughly, how much money do you think you'll generate from that?
The estimate is in the first year of collections, it would generate approximately six hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars.
And is the plan to hire a consultant to do the marketing and sales promotion or what?
Brandy, would you like to answer that?
Sure, of course. At this point, because we have not been able to get solid numbers yet from the county as far as the sales tax, we are kind of waiting to see as we collect our first quarter of assessments where we're at and kind of getting a much better estimate of what our income will be based on the Wine Heritage District Assessment Collection. At that point, we have already currently formed a marketing and brand awareness committee that will start to delineate out a specific plan until we are able to then at some point hire either in-house or out, outside, marketing consultants.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Vice Mayor Monroe.
Have any questions, but I do have a comment, which is that this just, I find this very exciting to see us going forward in a regional way and, you know, to continue to grow the, our wine region as an up-and-coming force. So it's great.
Okay, any other comments or are you ready to make the motion, Vice Mayor Monroe?
Sure, I'll make the motion. I still move that we adopt the motion, the motion is stated by, by staff.
I'll second.
So we say for that way.
Okay, and that's two components, to establish it and then to also request consent of our other, the counties and the other cities involved.
Yep, so both of those, great. Do we, do we need to break them into two pieces?
Well, no, you just have to make it clear that's what we're doing. That's all. And I want to just say, I think this is great. I know it's been in the works for a while. And I'm glad it's finally come to us and that we're going to be voting on it. So with that, can we have a rule call, please?
Councilmember Benano.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Councilmember Kik.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
Hi.
Mayor Warner.
Hi, passes unanimously. So thank you very much. And I imagine we'll be getting periodic reports on how it's working out. So, and I imagine that'll be great. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. The next step is item six dot four, which we added to the agenda. And it's council member appointments to intergovernmental agencies. And in particular, I need to make appointments to our two liaison committees. One with, it's council liaison committees, one with Pleasanton and one with Dublin. And these committees were established initially a long time ago, principally to deal with airport issues. And it's because of the recent concern that the communities have with respect to the airport operations that they've asked that these committees be, come out of quiescence and we, and we start them up again. So there are the two committees, the one is with Pleasanton. And I'm appointing myself and Councilmember Carling to that liaison committee. And the liaison committee with Dublin, I'm appointing Vice Mayor Monroe and Councilmember Benano. So I, and that takes care of that. And I'll just mention that in matters initiated, I'll be requesting council consent on it, on preparing for some of these meetings. So that's six dot four. I guess, at this point, do we have a, I guess, members of the public wish to comment on this?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, thank you. And then, so that's the closed public comment on that. So we're now on to council committee reports and matters initiated. And it's been a while, so I can't remember the order in which I do it, but I believe it's Councilmember Kik first.
I don't have much to share. I am going to be sending everything to Marie later. Sick Kids has me a little bit behind. So once I get that up, you can check everything out on the website. Nothing, nothing big to talk about. Thank you.
Excellent. And I hope you, your son feel better soon. Councilmember Carling.
Thanks. I listened, missed most of the committee meetings and commissions that I attended. Just wanted to call out a few other things. Several of us have been participating in Farmer's Markets Thursday afternoon. It's an opportunity for the public to meet with council members if they show, so desire. And of course, there's always some staff there promoting something that the city is doing. So that's, those have been interesting. I participated in the nine eleven remembrance on Saturday. And then Saturday evening, I attended the gala at the Bankhead. And that was Vanessa Williams was there to entertain. I think there were roughly three hundred people in attendance. And it was a, I think, a very exciting fundraiser for the Bankhead and the first, well, maybe not the first live performance, but certainly a point in time where we're, we're hope that we can get more entertainment at the Bankhead since they've been, you know, closed most of the last eighteen months. So again, that was a terrific evening and a lot of fun. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Benano.
Yeah, I'll just mention a couple of things quickly. A number of us attended the Chestnut Hill grand opening of the family apartments there. It's sort of the second phase after the senior, senior part of that community, and that was awesome. I know I really enjoyed it, met some of the families that are living there now. Great way to bring, you know, to bring to light all the great work that our, our folks in the housing department do to bring us those affordable housing developments and the strength of the community who turned out for that and really enjoyed the, did enjoy the celebration. And, you know, there's such a great need for it. So I just really, really love to see when we get one of those, one of those projects off the ground and occupied. It's really, really great. Second thing I'll just mention, I got off a Lafta board meeting earlier this afternoon. And something kind of exciting, we're going to be deciding on the neck, over on the next couple of months, on how to make the fleet all-electric, either through a fuel cell-based technology or a battery-based technology. So we're going to be working through the program and services committee first in the next couple of weeks. And then in November, we'll be voting on which path to move forward, whether it's a combination of fuel cell or battery operated or one or the other alone. It's a part of something the state is requiring that we become all renewable by two thousand forty. So that's pretty exciting. Learned a lot today and a lot to learn about, you know, the various pluses and minuses of those technologies. So you'll be, you know, in the next couple of decades, you'll be seeing a fleet of non-fossil fuel-based buses. So I'm pretty excited about that. And I'll just stop there. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Monroe.
Oh, I overlap with several of the previous, my, my colleagues on, on items. Um, I, and I, Councilmember Benano, I just to, to echo what, what, what Councilmember Benano said about Chestnut Square, absolutely fantastic. Also Farmer's Market, if you have not come and visited the, gone to your, gone to Farmer's Market Thursday night and visited the booth, go and do so. There, there's always something new from the city there. Councilmembers are there, but mostly there's, it's a place where you can learn about, about what the city's doing. This past week, Councilmember Carling and I were there along with staff working on the general, getting information about the general plan. So, you know, let's, let's move forward on, on thinking about where we're going there. On, in addition to that, several other things that they're on, they're on the list. But I wanted to call out something that's not on my list because I forgot it, which is that this past Friday, the tenth, I attended the Las Pecitas groundbreaking ceremony for three new buildings. And what we're seeing in Livermore through the Community College District is buildings that look at public safety and infrastructure, a building that looks at basic, the tools of learning, and one that, that looks at agriculture and horticulture, all of which are really important going forward into the twenty-first century. So it's very exciting to see the direction that our community college is, is going. I was really happy to be there. For the rest, it's on the website, and I will turn it over to the mayor.
Okay, thank you. I just want to second, Chestnut Square was really gratifying to see that next phase of the project open up. We had groundbreaking for some buildings of the open campus at the Livermore Labs in San Dia. Fundraiser for Goodness Village, you know, and so there, it's kind of good to see somewhat where our normal business is going, coming back to normal. We listened to the Councilmember Carling talking about the gala. So we are, we are doing things, even though we have the pandemic. And I think we're still, though, very focused on remaining safe. I'm certainly very concerned about, you know, making sure that we do stay there. And that's why the task force, and so a lot of my time went into that. Plus, with the mayor's working group in Alameda County on the, on the homeless issues as well. So a lot happening, you can look at the list on the, on the website. But it is good to see us getting back into some kind of reasonable cadence here with our normal activities. And I'm glad that, you know, that the people are, that you're there at the Farmer's Market and interacting with people. So that, that's all good. One of the matters initiated that I have is with respect to the airport. I think, you know, I and the rest of you, we've received a number of emails from throughout the tri-valley with regard to the airport operations. We've resurrected the liaison committees. And so the first request of staff is to set up those meetings after we've received our next round of noise data this fall and had a chance to analyze it. And then the second piece of information that would be, I believe, necessary for those liaison committee meetings is really information on the airport operations. And in particular, adherence to the voluntary flight restriction hours that we have. But not all of our pilots are necessarily being as good neighbors as they should be. And that's what's got many people upset. And so let's have the data, not only in general what the noise events are, but in particular, what information can we shed on what kinds of planes are causing the problem? And to what extent, um, in the normal eighty-twenty rule, is it twenty percent of the planes are, are creating eighty percent of the problem? So let's, let's just understand so that we can focus our and the, uh, community's attention on the, um, people that may need to modify their behavior. So that's, uh, one, uh, request. And so I've got another piece of this, but could I see, uh, head nods with respect to that request? Okay, I think we have that. Now, the, um, the second piece, uh, I want to focus in on another request is, uh, we have had, uh, curfew violations uh, and in particular by jets. And those have gotten a lot of attention. So I'd like to uh, make sure as, uh, Deputy City Manager Christine Martin to affirm uh, whether I've got this, uh, you know, the facts right, but how many fueling operations have occurred during the voluntary restraint from the nighttime, uh, operation hours?
Uh, thank you, Honorable Mayor. This is Christine Martin, your Assistant City Manager, and, uh, that number of fueling operations is twenty-three since January of two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, thank you. And that's not including two medical flights, right?
That's correct.
Right, because I think we all understand that the curfew and, and the medical flights have absolute priority. So the next question is, how many of those fueling operations, those twenty-three, were associated with a flight operation during curfew?
Uh, that would be twelve, again, not including the two medical flights.
Okay. And which LVK-based aircraft were associated with those flight operations?
Um, nine of those twelve operations were from LVK-based aircraft, and the two aircraft were both Gulfstream G-two-hundreds, otherwise known as Galaxies, uh, one of which is no longer based at LVK. Uh, however, both are Sky Partners aircraft, who is a tenant of Five Rivers Aviation.
Okay, and those are, uh, I believe, stage three jets, right?
That is correct.
Okay. So there, um, okay, so then the, here's my request of staff. Is the, um, to send a second letter to Five Rivers Aviation, uh, owner and operator, confirming that he understands that these fueling activities are in violation of his current contract and, um, that he will also refrain from enabling curfew violations in the future. So can I get a concurrence, asking staff to do that? Okay, thank you. So, uh, is the, uh, request, uh, clear, uh, Christine?
Yes, yes, Honorable Mayor, it is clear. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. And I think, uh, we're now, uh, going to, uh, let's see if I can get to adjourn. And, uh, let's see if I get the right dates here. In a moment. It's gonna be a, uh, our special city council meeting on September twentieth, two thousand twenty-one at five PM. And we'll have, be having a regular city council meeting on September twenty-seven at seven PM. And both of those are gonna be held, uh, virtually, uh, using Zoom. What, so we are now adjourned. So thank you.
Thank you.